My blood to the flag.
God, we come to you today looking for your help and guidance. Please keep all in need in your prayers. Amen? Public have anything to say?
I have something to say. I have a compliment that on Burnside in McKinley, someone mowed that lot there and you can see around it and that is an asset that it's something that needs to be complimented.
Anybody else? All right. Minutes of the last meeting? I hear motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Scott, Joy, all in favor? All right. Get right into it then. Water and sewer.
Okay, plug along. I hate to say it out loud that they kind of seem to be slowing down on the major leaks, but so far so good. Well, Randy and Frank came in with one this morning, but we'll have them check those out. Austin did get his license. He tested last Friday, Friday before last. And he passed, so we now have a Class D water operator, which is a plus. Getting there, but they're trying to work on streets as they can. They're putting down millings. The state gave some millings and we just gotta get with the Bronck and see something we can put on them that will adhere them together because they'll just
Wash out.
Yeah.
And keep them in the hole, because a lot of them have gone out of the holes already, unfortunately, but yeah.
All right, so enter the streets things too. Uh, animal control, anything to report?
I just, I have eight and a pound and it's kind of slowed down. There's a few sprays out there I'm trying to catch. Majority got the bulk of them.
Yeah, it's definitely slowed down a lot. A lot better than what it was.
I'd like to go back to the streets.
Yeah.
Uh, like the street down my house is closed. It's a big old gate there. And nobody don't need to come from the east. They could come as far as my house and that's it. You gotta turn back around. Now, uh Florence, South Florence, right by my cousin's house, I ain't gonna say no name, but it's closed too. And Tyler is too, because they ginning. And like one of their guys, like the guy hit last year. Like one of my, it was one of my neighbors up the road. So I'm trying to remind people, uh, don't come down those roads.
Yeah, did he get, uh, he was gonna put reflective
Yeah, they got that on. Yeah, we made an agreement. I s- I'd say, hey, my mailbox is here. You're gonna close off here and then I can't get my trash service. So they moved it up a little bit further past my house.
Good.
So it's, it's good to go.
Okay, can we go back up to the water on, um, they are getting ready to start the tower down here on the south side? Okay, because I noticed a truck yesterday that was down there with some stuff, but I don't know what the tar, I guess the tarps or whatever they're gonna be using. I did notice that. Um, and what is the deal with the boil water notice that, are we still under that?
That's a question for Jack. I don't, I don't know. All of our tests are great, but because of we had no licensed operators, so there was no one that was legal to take residuals, they don't honor them and they would
They're not honoring Jack on that, or is he doing that?
Well, Jack's doing them now and Austin can do them now. But the prior, they wouldn't honor any of those because they weren't licensed. And if they had taken them, they could have filed on them for acting as an operator. So we got in that catch twenty-two there that
I guess I just don't understand if we had Jack doing it and he's licensed.
But he wasn't coming here every day.
Oh, it has to be done every day? Okay, okay.
Yeah, so basically they negated when Larry was here. Anytime passed a licensed operator, well, even as far back as Brian, all of that was negated. All of those readings because they weren't done by a licensed operator, so. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Austin's doing them now. He's, he's hitting them every day and he's sending them in? Okay, uh, when was the last time one was sent in?
Uh, he emails
Or the first one that we can?
He emails Victoria. At T C Q. I don't know if he's emailing her weekly or what, but he's taking daily readings.
Okay.
And they have to have, I don't, I don't know exactly how many they have to have, but they have to have so much history before they will release it. They first told us
Okay.
They would release it, but then they didn't. But everything is good. All of the numbers are good, but
Okay, I, I mean, I just hadn't heard anything on it or anything like that, so I don't know if anybody else has, but I'm just curious.
Yeah.
And putting it out there for
Right, yeah. We thought we were there, uh, before last month, in October, before the meeting. We thought we were there and then they came and they told Jack, no, we can't, you can't do, you can't release it yet, so. It's like you jump through this hoop and then they find another hoop, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
They're working towards it.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
Still haven't heard anything back from Atmos. You know, I called their
Can we not get them and then keep up with the price and charge Atmos when it comes down or?
I don't know.
Keep somebody from falling in.
Yeah, I don't know. I know Stanford's kicked those people out. So I don't know. I can call the city attorney and ask him, but those are
Keep on calling, I guess.
Yeah.
Cemetery?
Yeah, no.
Probably on the last moment, hopefully again.
Yeah.
Have they been filling in any graves out there?
Well, Joe does when he comes, yeah.
Got my mom grave caved in.
Yeah, there's a lot to, they're gonna settle for
I know.
Three or four years. Well, we had one that was like fifteen years old that, that caved during that big rain, so I don't know.
Everything with trash been okay?
Yes, I've not had any, no major issues with trash.
Fire department?
Okay. Have a report somewhere.
I know they've had a few.
And in case anybody's missed it, the burn ban is on. They put it back on Monday.
Okay, twelve calls in October. Uh, two wrecks, car fire, house fire, five brush fires and one false alarm. And let's see. She has wreck, fire set and left, fire along the river, went two times, car fire, smell of smoke, wreck, house fire. Pasture fire went two times, controlled burn, out of control and pasture fire. And then they, uh, they were awarded two grants from the forestry service. One will purchase a skid for a bus, uh, one of the brush trucks. And then the second one is for a large brush truck. Uh, they also got a ten thousand dollar grant from iron. And they will use a portion of that money to replace the five inch supply hose line that was ran over in the fire in town.
Okay, going back on the two grants, one grant's gonna be for a skid for a brush truck. And then you said a brush truck, so they'll get another truck.
Another large brush truck, yes.
Okay, I thought that's what you meant.
All right, municipal court? Thirteen?
Thirteen, and basically two people had four each and then we've got two with two and one with one.
What are those on, Shayna?
Dog at large and no rabies.
Okay.
And if they can bring me, when Chris mails them the ticket or gives them the ticket, I get the ticket and then they get a notice from me as well. And I have a timestamp on that notice. If they got, if they can prove that they've got their rabies within ten days of the day I send out my notice, I'll dismiss that ticket. But they still have their dog at large ticket and each ticket runs about a hundred and ninety dollars. So you've got two people with four tickets at seven sixty each.
Wow.
Wow.
So.
Wow, okay.
And there are s- how many repeat offenders, two or three?
Those two right there have been repeated offenders and we've got two other ones that are repeated offenders. Everybody else has been new and everybody, most of them have called and paid. I mean, we've had good response, but we've got a couple that I guess ignore us. I don't know.
Did it, that remind me before you leave, we did get a call from
Yes, I
One of those who's again claiming they have no dogs.
Flash yesterday and boy, it's not locked this pool.
Court's working.
Chris is working.
Which is making Shayna work.
Library?
Uh, library's still, um, I think I reported y'all they're having a, on Tuesday mornings, they're having a it's kind of a, started out as a quilting thing, but now I think it's any kind of handwork. They come and fellowship and do their
That's good.
Quilt crochet, I don't know what else, cross stitch, I think there's a little bit of everything, so.
All right, city park?
Okay, no change. Uh, Harold had mowed his last. He said he'd keep an eye on it and if it needed it, he'd let me know. I still don't have anything back from the economic development. Uh, Sine was working on trying to find filler for the pits. But I haven't heard anything from, from her on those. She had, had some pregnancy issues, so she's kind of had to slow down because she was basically given bad rest, so.
All right, personnel? Everybody on right now?
Yeah, we're full. Everybody's full. Guys are
Okay, for now.
Yeah, guys are working hard.
Yeah. All right, financial report?
Okay, nothing, nothing crazy in there, nothing out of the ordinary. From what I recall.
Yeah, just the water towers, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, those were the big, big expenses. The
They look good so far.
Yeah. He's supposed to be sending me inside pictures after they're done, you know, the after, so.
Is the north one back in service?
Yes, yes. And they should start working on the south tower. I don't know if they'll put the shroud, I don't know how that's all gonna work.
I'm ready to see that, see how they catch all that.
Me too.
Um, are they gonna be blocking off any of the roads right there? They just
Not, not that I'm aware of.
I don't know if they did it with the other one or not, because I didn't go up there, but, um
They didn't. Now, the shroud thing, I don't know. I don't know if that'll be any different, but I wouldn't think so, because it's kind of
Okay, I was, I was just curious. I mean, with the school there and everything else, it's, that would be a nightmare without the traffic. Okay.
All right, anybody want to make a motion to approve the bills? Scott, anyone a second?
One second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Animal control vehicle?
Okay, there's a bed from, uh, Fort House and Snyder for a twenty-six. It's a single cab, gas. Uh, M S R P is fifty-three, three sixty, and he got it down to forty-eight, four ninety-one. He took off over four and then, uh, fifteen hundred dollar rebate, forty-eight, four ninety-one.
Yeah.
Total. He, it took him a while to get everything because I had to send him all this stuff so he could make sure that, that we can take the, the bed off of this current truck and put on there, so.
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna work, I'm, find somebody to do it, I'm sure.
They say they won't do that part of it?
He didn't say, he didn't say. He just had to make sure that the chassis was right because it, it has to be a long bed.
Have to be the right chassis for that box to fit on.
Okay, so we're just gonna take that off and put it on the new one then? Okay.
I bet you'd be glad to have another truck.
So is this with the trade-in?
Yeah, that's no trade-in. I didn't ask him if he wants that and, but I can if y'all want me to.
I think he'd give much for an old six oh, but
No.
If it takes anything off of it then, you know, I mean
Especially one with the
If it knock off some, some dollars off of it, it'd be a good idea.
Well, might be better off just selling it though.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because they're, they're gonna use that, use that as an auction truck, they, they don't want it, so.
Yeah, I don't know. It's got major problems, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to do this, because he needs something that's gonna be dependable and that's gonna work.
Second.
Scott, seconds. What everybody else think? On favor?
Okay, with that being said, do y'all want me to check on trade-in or sell it outright?
I would check on trade-in if, if it don't.
You can always ask.
I'll please sell it outright.
Okay.
Y'all think we'd get more, more money selling it outright?
I think so.
Let somebody else do something? I don't know.
That's gonna be a hard situation.
Randy, you voted, you vote out?
Yeah.
And that one's diesel, right?
Yes, that one's diesel.
Okay.
Randy, you think, which one you think's better on this? You trade vehicles more with anybody else?
I, I think you'd better off selling it. I ain't gonna give nothing on trade-in.
No, it's gonna be an auction truck.
Yeah.
Well, instead of putting more on her plate, just let, just, let's just get this and then, um, we can try to sell it once everything is taken off of it and
Yeah.
Doing all that, you know, get the new one set and then we can
Discard or the old one?
Yeah.
Okay, I will check with him today and see. I don't know if that's a vehicle he has on site, that we can get started on it immediately or if he'd have to get it, bring it in.
Well, that was gonna be my next question is, um, do we have any kind of an ETA on it? Okay.
Um, everyone voted in favor?
Yes.
Must be tired, you got lost on that one.
I am tired. I've had about five hours sleep since I was in the state.
Fisher County Appraisal District cast votes for board seats.
Okay, like I said, I'm, I'm not real sure why we're having an election because there are five nominees and five spots, so.
And what do we get? City, we get fifty-six?
Trish is one of those lucky ones.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't know, do we want to spread ours out? It just don't make any difference if there's only five, does it?
Right.
I mean, so just spread ours out evenly or what do y'all think?
I mean, it's eleven on each one with one left over, so.
Give Trish twelve?
That'd work, that works.
Who else listed? It is Brandon Sherwitz, Chris Kaiser, Rayford Hargrove. Those three are recur- returning and chose to serve. Uh, again, let's see, David Mullins and who was the other one? Oh, Brad, uh, one of Stuart Boy's.
Uh, Hunter, yeah.
Those two chose not to, they didn't want to be re-nominated. So the new nominees are Joe Posey and Trish.
Do we, do we even make a motion to spread ours out or, all right, we wanna make a motion just to spread our votes out, all right? Second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Public comment guidelines for agenda.
Okay, we talked about that last night. Uh, Joy came up with there, this, there's one page that has what will be given to each one who does comments. And this is just a sample of what would be on the actual agenda. And it just shortened that down to the public comment. After the call to order, each citizen will have three minutes to speak. The city council is not permitted to respond to comment or questions from the public on items not listed on the agenda. So that would be all that's on the actual. And then, uh
And don't blame me for this. I took this off of your stuff you had left.
I know. I know.
Don't blame me for this, but anyway, sorry.
Okay, on that, it's, uh, intent of rules. The following rules are adopted by the city council of the city of Rotan as directory rules to promote the orderly conduct of its business and to make its formal methods of operations known to citizens who have business before the council. One, prior to the start of the meeting, any citizen wishing to speak shall sign up on the citizen comment sheet on the day of the council meeting. The signup sheet will list the citizen's name, address and valid contact phone number. Two, the council shall call on the speaker in the order in which the speaker is on the signup sheet. Three, each citizen will have three minutes to speak and may only speak during their allotted time. Four, responses to any comments are limited to a statement of specific fact- factual information, a recitation of existing policy or the direction to staff to place the subject on the agenda for a future city council meeting. Five, the use of vulgar, profane, inflammatory or defam- defamatory language is not permitted. Six, the use of slanderous or personal belittling is not permitted. Please note, the city council is not permitted to respond to comments or questions from the public on items not listed on the regular agenda. And these will be with the, the list. When they come in to sign up, this will be with it and they can take one. And then each council meeting will have its own, own signup sheet and it will be kept for
Can we ask somebody to fill out all that, all that information though? I mean, isn't that kind of a You don't, you don't have the right ID somebody though.
No, this is only to sign up. This is not to be made public as far as their information. Carolyn and I discussed that part of it.
Yeah.
Making sure they have a city address.
Yes, and that way with the contact number too, because if something comes up and I need to contact them and I don't have their number, how am I gonna get in touch with them? So it's just a
But it wasn't gonna be made public?
No, not at all.
No, no.
I like this, I think it's good.
Well, and with this also, um, I just think, I think that, um, not only do a lot of the rules, I know this is for public comments, but we also need to keep in mind that the street goes both ways on stuff and how each person's spoken to and that kind of thing.
Right.
I think it, um, I mean, we, we need to make sure we show the same consideration, the decorum and the respect towards our citizens as we are expecting them to show us. I just wanted to put that out there, even though it's not on here, but I just think
Did you say that? What did you say it for? Now, Trish already covered it up. Would you say, where they had to fill out?
It's just name, name, address
One A.
Valid contact phone number.
Yeah, I just, I heard somebody say, would you do your, make sure they have a city address? And I thought, what if somebody doesn't live in the city but has business?
Well, they're on D P N R, I mean, if they're on the D P N R lines too, they, I think that they
Or ours. We have people on our transmission line.
Yeah, anybody that is served by the city, yes.
So do we need a motion to pass this?
Uh huh.
I make a motion, we pass it.
All right, wait a second, Scott, second. All in favor? Ham list?
Okay, I don't think I left anyone out, but it's all of the council members, uh, the guy, the outside guys, water and sewer guys, Chris, Shayna, uh, Robert Hoffman, who is fire chief and fire marshal, and then
Helen.
Uh, Helen at the library and then Ida and myself.
Should we put Jack on there?
Probably, yeah. Good call, Randy.
Want to make a motion to approve this ham list? Scott, one second. Randy, all in favor? Next is employee bonuses.
Okay, um, in y'all's, there is a list of, of, uh, employees full-time and part-time with hire dates, with the exception of mine. I didn't start in February of twenty twenty-five, it was two thousand eight. That gives the, uh, date of hire and then the years, months and years of service. I know last year y'all had mentioned something about maybe going to a length of service, based on length of service. So I just wanted to get that yet. We don't do them until the fifteenth of December payroll, so if y'all wanna think about that and make the decision next month, whatever y'all wanna do. Know what I did with my note last year?
Okay, what was the, what was the amount that we did last year?
Nine seventy-five supervisors. I had a note and I didn't put it on that and then I threw it out to Trish. Six seventy-five, I believe, on, yeah, here it is. Okay, yeah, full-time, six seventy-five, part-time, four twenty-five.
We don't have anybody part? We have what we do too.
Yeah, we have, uh, Shayna and Helen. And it also probably wouldn't be a bad idea since Jack won't take money to, to do, uh, do a bonus. I don't know if he'll accept it, but I could ask. He spent all day over here yesterday with T C E Q.
Okay, and we've got Chris, Austin, Kevin and Bryson and John. Those are all full-time, plus Ada and you. Oh, you've got it. Okay, never mind. Don't laugh at me.
I'm not, I'm laughing with you.
I'm, I didn't see the headings, I'm sorry.
I said if y'all wanna wait till next month, that's fine. It's strictly up to y'all.
I'll say we table it to next month.
Anybody else?
I think just do it, but whatever, you know.
I know, well, pretty much all the city guys haven't been here that long, but it's still something for them to, you know, look forward to since they
Right.
They do have a hard job, not, they're doing less work just because they hadn't been here ten years, but
Just a bonus, right? Yes.
Help them buy some Christmas.
I'd say just do what we did last year.
I think anybody here I think anybody here under a year, that, um, the full-time guys.
It's all of them.
Yeah, that's, well, except for John Flores. Except for John. Um.
He's not full-time? John's not full-time?
Yeah, he's up there.
Okay, Frank, this is what I just learned. There's a heading right there, I just found that. That I did not see.
I started to separate them into department, and then I thought, wow, so I just left them full-time, part-time.
No, you did good, I just didn't look at it, you're fine. Um.
I'll say we go with what we did last year.
When I, when Randy said
I think under a year, I don't think they need, they, they, I think that under a year with five hundred, the part, the other full-time, um, that's over a year, what we had last year, part-time, leave it, and I don't know. What do y'all think?
I'll leave it like it is.
Yeah, I think. Leave it across the board? Same?
Yes. Make a motion, we do this.
Okay, anybody want a second? Scott, all in favor of leaving like it is?
Who's the neighbor buddy?
Oh, it's fine. Um, I just put an ID out there, that's all.
Average to jewelry.
Make a motion, we decide on that one next year.
I said the same thing, she didn't give me that option.
No, I'm not accepting it. Uh-uh. You can't.
Does it make this boy, my name's misspelled?
What?
So does it, does it make this boy?
Did I misspell your name?
This is getting hard down.
No, seriously.
Yeah, it's misspelled, but
C O C H, instead of K.
And I looked at the email, apparently my fingers didn't cooperate with it, I'm sorry, Zach.
That's normal for me.
Okay, for those
Carla, do you already have one of those?
I do.
Did I give you, did I, I didn't just give you one, did I?
No.
Okay, can I borrow yours for a second? If you don't mind, please.
You messed up my last name, I only got one L.
It's all things Lloyd.
Well, so does Lloyd, and you only have one L in yours, okay, and you have an E on the M.
I don't know, it might be right. Like Frank might be right.
Joy, I understand how you feel.
This resignation is invalid.
Due to clerical errors. Are you gonna let me have it back, or?
The hard term you rescind in I'm getting out of all of this, I tell you what.
Your resignation?
No, I'm not. Anyway, um, no, it's just with mixed emotions that I am going to be resigning my position here. Um, and I do have effective today on it, but I also understand that until somebody is appointed, um, I get that, um, but anyway, I'm gonna be running for county office. And I think in order to keep things more clear with the public and that kind of thing, I think it would be in the best interest of not just the city, but also in a campaign that I do this. And some of us understand the election stuff a lot better than uh, there, it's very difficult in what the guidelines are and the rules are. So, um, I just think that it would be, um, that this is what I really need to do on this, um. And for those of the public, I do appreciate everything that, you know, all the support that I have had from the public and the comments that I've heard from everybody, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yep.
I've never had anybody step down since I've been on.
Motion to accept our resignation.
Any one a second? Nobody wants a second?
I will.
Lloyd, all in favor? All right, thank you, Joy. Administrative?
Okay, nothing other than the starting on that last tower. It'll probably be next week before they get started, but, because we'll have to take it out of service and drain it and all the fun stuff.
Hopefully that goes better than the last one.
From your lips to God's ears.
All right, we make a motion to adjourn?
Um, I got a question on the, um, and anyway, on the water tower, when it drains and everything, all that's gonna be going down like it, whenever it spews the overflow? All that's gonna be going down like it does with that, no?
No, they'll just take it out of service, they'll quit putting water into it, so when the water come, and turn the pumps off, so it will drain itself. It'll drain into the system.
That's it.
Yeah, it'll drain into the system.
Okay.
Failed clay valves on the other one.
Exploded.
That is the best case scenario, that's what we hope happens. That's what we hoped for in the other one, it just didn't work out that way, that clay valve was, had to be taken out.
I was just wondering where all the excess was gonna go. It's gonna be emptied by use, not by consumption, not by
Not by waste.
Hopefully anyway, yeah.
Just by flow, that's all it is. Just a bird.
Oh, um, I'm glad you said that. That, the, this tower, the south tower, has that, the bird on it. And, uh, I had told them, they were kinda concerned about getting that bird back on there. So, uh, I just happened to run into Lloyd that day, and I said, what do you think about putting the razor R up there in the place of the bird?
I thought he was fine.
That, that bird's been up there, I don't know. Do you remember Shayna? Do you, do you, do you remember?
Yeah.
I know it's been there as long as I've been here.
We were here to stay in eighty-two, so
Yeah.
That's been there since then.
And no, nobody ever knows what, anybody comes to town, they don't know what that is up there, they can't figure it out.
No, in fact, they asked me, said, where do, where did you get that picture of that eagle? And I said, that's not an eagle, that's a yellowhammer.
That's a yard bird.
Most people don't know what a yellowhammer is, anyway.
Woodpecker.
I think an R, I think the big R would be great. I think that, what's on the other one, there's nothing on the other one.
It's be more visible, it just says Rotan.
Yeah, that's what
Okay.
Somebody was before, yeah.
I think with that being, by the school and by the field and all that stuff, we need to have the, you know, the big R would be great.
Yeah, well, our, yeah, our R is identifiable by a lot of people. They see our R and they know it's Rotan.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not like anybody else's. I don't know, because it's been, it was before my time, so I don't, I don't know.
I'm hippie.
I don't remember if it was here when I was here in the eighties or not, I don't remember. The bird on the
Same bird.
Water tower. I mean, we, uh, we were here from eighty to eighty, well, my mom and dad from eighty to eighty-five, I was only here until about eighty-two, but I don't young and stupid and don't pay attention to anything, so I don't know.
Okay.
Anyway. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
A second.
All in, all in favor?
Bill check. Call spell check, yeah.
I spelled yours right, though, right? Honey, you got mine right.
I answered up. Been a pleasure, Joy, okay.
When I write your name, I have to say it Marquis, not Marcus, because I won't ever spell it right. I've been called Marquis most of my life, so.
Well, in the state, it's about sixty-two, I think.
No, it was, uh, the eighties.
After that, that was in eighty. It's in the eighties, yeah.
When we went to state.
Semi-final. They put that bird up when I worked there.
You were working?
They painted it on there, but I can't remember what year. Eighty or something, I don't even, somewhere near. Think so. I thought, I thought you split a third of your pilot point, need us, but, like, two many years ago, I don't know.
I don't know, it was in the eighties.
Pilot point beat us up, yeah.
I don't remember who, I just remember us going and, uh, remember it too.
Yeah, I remember the ride.
Carla, do you have me on the list for pickup for tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Because I don't wanna put that, take that thing out, that thing was a pain in the neck to get out of the house. Thank you.
So you got the gist, nobody wants you to leave.
Yeah, I got that.
But I understand what you're doing. Go for it.
I just wanna make sure everything is very clear and everything like that, so.
I understand, I understand.
Unfortunately, with everything, with working where I work, I hear so much misinformation and misunderstandings on everything. And it is just
Well, it's like you said, the majority of people do not understand election
They, no, no, they do not.
Well, that's in this
For those that, those of us that do, it's hard to figure it out.
Okay, so I always get mixed up. Which one, which, Joe or Stuart is commissioned?
Stuart.
And Joe's on this board, okay.
Yes, Stuart Posey.